It is 4:30, so we'll go ahead and get the meeting called to order. I know this is normally our work session scheduled meeting, but we do have one voting item that we had to add to the agenda. So we have actually changed it to enact a call meeting so that we can have the one item that is voted. Most of our agenda will be our normal work session agenda with that one exception. Before we kick the meeting off and dive in, I just want to say thank you to everyone for being here. I know that we met right before Hurricane Helene had hit, and I think that our community was spared. I know the forecast was coming directly to us for a lot of what we're seeing on the news that happened in other places. So I would like to just say thanks to everybody for the preparation that you did do and then try to be ready. But we were very fortunate when that shifted. But our prayers are definitely still with all the communities that were hit. So also, as we get ready to go into our invocation prayer time, there is another storm that's headed toward Florida. Fortunately, it looks like it's staying south of Georgia, but I know that our neighbors to the south are bracing for a significant storm that got upgraded to category five today, which is significantly larger than what the category four was before. So definitely continue to pray for our country. If you'll join me, I'm going to open us up with the invocation and prayer, and then Mr. Tippins is going to lead us into the pledge. Father, we thank you for being with us. We thank you for a chance that we can gather and meet. We thank you for the culmination of the nation that allows this. And we just really are grateful. We ask that you guide us, that you direct us, that you just grant us wisdom and discernment in all the decisions that we have to make. God, we pray for our community, for the safety of everyone in our community, not just our citizens, but all that are serving, all our public safety officials that are serving, not just here, but throughout our state and throughout our nation and throughout our world. We're asking for just your mercy on all that are recovering from the storms from last week. Just ask that you continue to provide safety and that you provide just a helping hand and look out for them. And God, as we brace for other storms that are coming south of us, God, we're just praying for everyone to be safe, for lives to be spared, and for all that you can do. We just thank you in advance, and Jesus in it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So this one's going to sound funny. The only amendment to our agenda that we have is the approval of the agenda. So as we go into the approval of the agenda, where amendments would be approved, we did have an item for the approval of the agenda. Now, the agenda has been provided to each member before coming in today. So with that, I have a motion to accept the amended agenda.
So we say?
Any discussion? All in favor? We will move forward with our amended agenda with the approval. The next item on our agenda is for updates on land use intensity map, which is rezonance change request. We've got Charles Reece with Planet Development that's going to get through and give us what we have on the upcoming meeting for the 21st. So I'll turn it over to Charles.
Fortunately, these three applications should be easy peasy in terms of meeting the land use requirements that we have in our code of ordinances and our land use, future land use maps. First case is RZ-190796. The applicant is Robert M. K. Burns. Property is located 75 Jones Mountain Road, Talking Rock. The request is to rezone from agriculture AG to state residential ER. Total acreage is 6.65 acres. The parcel is referenced at 010064001. The intent is to correct, it'll be a correction of the nonconforming zoning status on the property for residential purposes. As far as if whether or not it meets the future land use vision, the character area for that property or what it's surrounded by would be rural residential. Staff would be recommending, after reviewing the applicant's request, approve or request to rezone the 6.65 acre parcel from agriculture to estate residential. Future development shall comply with all applicable codes to ensure that all residential structures on the property meet safety regulations to protect the health and welfare of the surrounding residents. Do I have any questions? The next case references RZ-190797. The applicant is Leonard Jacklet, LJ372 LLC. The address of the property is 625 Jerusalem Church Road in Jasper. The request is to rezone from AG agriculture to rural residential. Total acreage of the property is 3.24 acres. The intent, the applicant's intent of zoning request is to split off two acres with the home to sell, while maintaining the rest as farmland. 3.2, what's that?
He's splitting off the whole 3.24 acres. Not the two. He went back and forth trying to figure out if he wanted to do the two or the 3.24. Sorry.
Good.
Yep.
All right. And you notice there in the location map, the surrounding areas fit pretty much the request for, the request that's being made by the applicant. Also notice what the future land use plan for the area is rural residential. So it's compatible to the vision that we have for that area, that's the county. After reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the request to rezone, you say 3.24 acres?
Yep.
Acre portion of the 29.99 acre parcel known as 039045 from agriculture to rural residential with the following condition. Future development shall comply with all applicable codes to ensure that all residential structures on the property meet safety regulations to protect the health and welfare of surrounding residents. Any questions? The next, well, last application we have for you this evening is references RZ-190798. Address of the property is 146 Hive Metals Lane in Jasper. Request is to rezone subject property from AG agriculture to estate residential ER. The total acreage is 10.34. Parcel, the actual parcel is 040032. The applicant's intent of the zoning request is to split and sell a three acre portion of the land. You can see once again with the location map that the request zoning is compatible to the surrounding area. And it also meets the criteria that is set forth with our future vision for the area for rural residential. And recommendation, after reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approve or the request to rezone the 10.34 acre parcel known as 040032 from agriculture to estate residential. Again, with the following condition. Future development shall comply with all applicable codes to ensure that all residential structures on the property meet safety regulations to protect the health and welfare of surrounding residents.
Will you go back to the map view that one time?
One more forward.
I'm sorry, Chris.
Why? Because like in old times, I was like, oh, you're simple.
You were taking 10 acres to small ag, but that shows two different tracks. So you're going to have one RR and one small ag?
Both the state residential.
Yes, both.
Both the state residential.
I'm sorry, which is three acres?
Yes.
Brain lapse. Thank you.
No, no, you're fine.
I'm scared you're completely.
I saw you was in control, so I just.
Okay, all right. I'll take it back for.
Any other questions?
Charles, thank you. I appreciate you bringing those up.
All right, you were talking today, the state residential, and I was hearing small ag in my head.
So next item we have on the agenda is something that we've been working on with staff for quite some time. I've asked Bill to kind of give an update today on an overview. Where we're working on the plan Unified Land Use and Land Development Ordinance is to try to simplify and combine a couple of different areas. I know that you guys have both met with staff at different times. So I was going to get Bill to kind of give us an update on where we're at on that, just so that we can kind of take a look at this one. So we'll let Bill Wood, Director of Administration, people come up.
Thank you. Chris had basically indicated what the title is. The working title is Pickens County Unified Land Use and Development Ordinance. It is seeking to create one unified approach to administering several overlapping regulatory areas. The drafting is in process, as Chris indicated. This is entirely an in-house effort. We did have money budgeted to get external help on this. We did talk to various parties. We could not find anyone that we thought would be a good fit for this, and we made a conclusion that we can do probably as good or a better job as anyone else can on that. We found a lot of people that are interested in talking about the general principles and applying a lot of border plate concepts. But in terms of applying it to specific jurisdictions and the dynamics in a particular jurisdiction, particularly when you get outside of metro or outside of Columbus, Muskogee, or outside of Augusta, or outside of those places, it's a lot of what we found was applying border plate items. This is a high level overview. We, as Chris indicated, we have been fortunate to get input from you all individually. We will keep coming to you all individually, the intervals of the rest of this, and we will look forward to getting your input. You can always come to us at any time that you want to, obviously. The high level overview, there will be four pieces to this. The project enhancements, the core elements of the unified approach, and the highlights. So the project. We indicated one unified approach to administering several overlapping regulatory areas. What that means from a drafting standpoint is merging and enhancing four current chapters that are separate and distinct. And merging and enhancing four current chapters. Chapter 16, Buildings and Building Regulations. Chapter 38, Land Development Standards. Chapter 54, Roads and Bridges. Chapter 67, Land Use Intensity Districts and Maps. We look at a flow chart depiction of what we're trying to do. And what we're going to do is we've basically got one objective in mind. That's one unified chapter that is a unified approach. We're coming at it from four different directions. Land use, land development, buildings, and roads. We're going to merge all of these. We're going to enhance the content in each one and streamline it. We're going to synergize the concepts in it with one unified approach. And we're doing one more very important thing that we don't have right now. We're basically going to incorporate fire prevention and suppression into this from the standpoint of the fire marshal. Fire marshal is involved in pieces of this, but it's coming from basically the perspective of estate obligations. And like other counties, we're going to incorporate that into this one unified chapter. Very important thing to do. The enhancements. Clarity and consistency. We're basically, as you all have read of various pieces of our ordinances, we've done a lot of work to clarify things and to make things consistent. For reasons that we'll look at here in a couple of seconds, there's a lot of gaps and improvements that need to be made there. Some things we just don't cover. For example, we don't have certain uses covered at all. We don't even consider them in the concept of the code. There are lots of those. We'll talk about that a little bit more in detail later. Efficiency. We need to basically create something that streamlines the administration of this so that we operate planning and development and other folks that are involved in this, such as the Marshal's Office, and we basically get as much as we can out of our resources. Right now, various aspects of the code aren't doing us any favors here. Fairness. Fairness to the people that are involved, that basically live in this county and those that come to do businesses in this county. Policy. This is a big one. We'll come back to this in a second. Simplicity, and a very, very important one. We want to basically construct this unified chapter to facilitate better customer service. And we can start with that at the very law where this starts, as opposed to just what goes on in the office. It's a very, very important part of this. We have gaps, redundancies, and obsolescence throughout our four disparate chapters. And it's because there's fragmentation that brackets what we're working with. And there are two aspects of this. There's a content aspect of it. As we indicated before, we're bringing four separate chapters together. Right now, we're administering these four separately. When they bump into each other from administrative standpoint, we take care of the bump into. Each run of these, basically, each chapter in and of itself has all of the problems that are on the left in terms of the seven items. When you put them together and try to administer them in combination, when situation is called for, it just compounds the problem with the seven aspects on the side, and that we're going to fix. And the second part of this is the adoption. Eighteen years. This is, in eighteen years, this has been touched since 1997. In 1997 is when in Unicode, which is where our ordinance and other local jurisdictions ordinances are basically recorded and kept, and it's the reference point for us. Our substantive content only goes back to 1997. The first reference to an ordinance I can find in the prepared charts is 1957. But there's nothing that exists in Unicode up to the point 1997. Since 1997, in these eighteen years, these ordinances have been touched 24 times. Some narrowly, some inserting a particular thing. You've done it at least three times. You've done it with so-called downzoning. You've done it with a couple of uses, solar generation farms and cryptocurrency money. But you can see, if you look at this frame, you can see the gaps between these. On the one hand, wow, that's a lot of times it's been touched. On the other hand, considering some of the gaps, it hasn't been touched very much. Unfortunately, I think we're getting the worst of both of those. So this is an opportunity to basically take care of it at one point in time. All right, so we bring back basically the seven enhancements that we're compelled to make. We look at it from a policy standpoint. We wanted to basically share this perspective with you because from a planning and development standpoint, Charles and everyone that works back there, me having oversight responsibilities, this is, we encounter this every day, and we think about it every day. And that is this. We're accommodating and balancing two things back there. Number one is the individual interest of landowners and other stakeholders with regard to a particular land or a particular parcel or a particular development or whatever you have. I mean, that's basically the job of planning and development, is to accommodate that interest. But that has to be balanced with the overall interest of the entire unincorporated community. Those have to be balanced. The second part of that is just as much of a customer for planning development as is the first part. And that's also when regarding what you guys did. It's balancing those things. With regard to the other bodies that touched this, Planning Commission, Board of Appeals, Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals, balancing these things. When we balance these things, we're working with two things. The law, hence the importance of enacting these ordinances or some form of updated ordinance, and the application of the law. Those are two things we do, those two things you do, two things everybody does around here that basically serves these two types, two types of folks. And this is really what's driving this, right here. It's what we try to think about every day. It's what we're thinking about in writing these things. One thing I did put up here that's as important element as the other two, and it's really a sub element of the application of the law and trying to, we certainly try to do it on a basis, on an everyday basis. We want to do it as we draft this, and that's common sense. Because there seems to be a shortage of that around just by anywhere we go. All right, so, and it's not just the policy. Every one of these, particularly fairness, basically point to that one very simple graphic of accommodating and balancing the interest of you guys constituents and the folks we serve from a staff standpoint. The core elements, there are seven of them. I'm going to bracket these. One and two, with what I think are, at least my individual view, is the most, are the two most important, although they're all important. That's land use districts and land uses. Charles just made the presentation on three cases you're going to take up. That's what this is about. It is primary and key to what you guys do, what we did. And then the land development, land use permits at the bottom of this, which is something that not a lot of folks think about, but planning and development sure does. And it's really, it's really key to position these and ultimately opportune position in all of this to basically accomplish what we want to accomplish. There's also the general land use standards, which govern basically all land and unincorporated. Specific land use standards for specific types of land, subdivisions, campgrounds, those kinds of things. We've got a lot of work to do with those. Processes of application, review, appeal. Roles and responsibilities, I've mentioned before. We've got five. We've got planning and development staff. We've got you all. We've got the construction board. We've got the Board of Appeals. We've got Planning Commission. There are various folks who are involved in part of this. They're not involved in every part of it. Not even you guys are involved in every part of it. There's no official role for you guys in subdivisions. There will be if y'all basically adopt what we're going to write. But that's an example. And then the implications of noncompliance. We're a right now, planning and development, I think rightly so, is a compliance-driven shop with the great assistance of the Marshal's Office. You could probably say that way. But we can really tighten things up with regard to noncompliance. Not necessarily generate fines, money off fines and penalties, but basically as a deterrent for folks that really don't want to follow what they should be following and basically maintain the type of county that folks out there that vote for you and that live here are telling you the kind of county they want, at least in the unincorporated area. So we've got five things that have to do with these seven elements. This gets to the heart of the work we're doing. So we overlay it on that. Definitions and dimensions, requirements, consequences, and steps. And that also includes documentation requirements. If we look at that one picture as it overlays the seven items we're trying to deal with, merging, synergizing, and improving four different chapters, this is the one picture that shows it all. There's a tremendous amount of work in this because we have to go all the way down to ground level with all of these and create them, recreate them, modify them. It's not just that we're doing it for each of the chapters. We're also having to do it in the combined sense we would bring them together. So that's one reason why this has taken a long time. But this is one thing we've got to do the best we can to get this as right as possible for the reaction. So just want to point out, this is one thing I do like about the existing setup. And this goes back a lot, all the way back to 97. The current ordinances do have development permits that are required. They're not going to basically, they don't really set them up the way that we administer in terms of the position and the approach and the way we're going to position it in the new ordinance. But they are there and they're important. We look around at a lot of different counties' ordinances, and it's rare to see these things consolidated at one point. So that is one important thing that the prior folks got way back when, got right. And I'll get basically to these. Going back to this, these nine that are highlighted yellow are what, planning and development administrators, environmental health administrators, the septic tank permit, but yet it is a development permit required locally. And when we look at these permits, they start the application process, they go to review process, they go to the approval or rejection process stage, and then it goes to the aftermath, whatever that is. Whether nothing happens or we have to go to court, whatever it is, this all starts with the application, and we basically track the application and manage the application all the way through the process. So the highlights. I'll start with what we just got off of. The importance of the permits and those kinds of certificates and documents. We're going to streamline the existing ones in the section we just saw. We're going to bring in existing other ones from other parts of the code and elevate them to that level. We're going to add a limited number of forms, and we're going to create systemic paths from application to aftermath for all of these, not just administratively in the all. Because that's where we'll get clarity and a lot of the other benefits. And we're going to create comprehensive cross-referencing between the permit types. That's very, very important in terms of the efficiency of the department. Potential new land use districts. And these are in the horizontal part of the table that we're all familiar with. At the top, churches are an example we're working with. Government example. Rural business one, we're really excited about schools, utilities. There'll be others. And what we want to do in conjunction with having these is we want to institute, and I've got this in quotes, a relaxed change process where people with a qualifying existing land use districts can basically go into the new districts as in an easier fashion as possible. It'll be, it'll be, it'll be very important as we try to implement whatever we're going to do. So we drop that off, we get with it. We're going to add new land uses. This is on the vertical table portion. We're going to modify existing use descriptions. Some of them just, they're just not applicable anymore. We're going to provide new uses. There'll be quite a few of these. And the reason we're doing that is we want to narrow the scope of the administration of unlisted uses. Because when we have an unlisted use, and it happens more than you'd think it would, there's a lot of power within the planning and development office stowed by the ordinances to deal with it. But it's extremely general, almost without exception, and it makes me nervous. So we're going to streamline it and make it much, 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 much more effective. These people, you know, we're in 2024. There's a lot of things out there that people want to do, business-wise. A lot of things that people want to do with their property, just like you did with solar farms and with cryptocurrency money. And we need to try to be as specific as possible in advance with as many of these as we can contemplate. Subdivisions. We want to refine our major minor classification. We want to change the cutoff point. Working with the number we'll be getting with you guys on that. We want to fortify and shore and sharpen the subdivision application and approval process. We want to augment the responsibilities in the subdivision application and approval process. In other words, get more parties involved formally with regard to reviewing these for approval or denial. We want to institute a more comprehensive approach to subdivision process documentation. Roads. County road classification, we want to work on. We want to work on county road dimensional standards, line of sight standards, right-of-way standards. I know Kirk's got some things he wants to do with private roads, even though we don't have them in the county system, such as assigned standards, things like that. So there'll be more to the road space. Hardship cases. Broaden and simplify the process of application, review, and approval of hardship cases. Right now, it's pretty much narrowed into a variance process situation, which is fairly rigid, time-consuming, involves a lot of people, very high-profile. A lot of legitimate hardships come into planning and development office. They really do. Some come in with things that aren't exactly hardships, and they say they are, but they're not. I won't go into any examples, but we have both of those things. But we really need to try, with your blessing, to try to find a way for true hardships that are really, really extreme to find a faster way to deal with them and to provide relief to people who really, really do need it. And then there's density. And you will see that dealt with more specifically than what we have now. And then there's quote-unquote grandfathering. And you will see that dealt with because that is essential to implementing any kind of change like this one. And I have this in quotes because the term grandfathering is thrown around a lot with regard to land use and similar situations we have in planning and development. Grandfather, the word grand, a derivative of the word grandfather is used one time in the entire set of ordinances that this county has. And that one time is in signs. And it's the derivative of grandfathered. The term that's used in chapter 67, land use, is nonconforming. There's nonconforming buildings and structures. There's nonconforming buildings and structures. There's nonconforming uses. There's nonconforming lots. But often grandfathering is used informally to describe those. The nonconforming, as you all know, I didn't come from government. So the first time I heard nonconforming, well, that's just something aside of compliance. Well, that's not how our ordinance is using. It's something that basically we use the term grandfathering for. If somebody said permitted nonconforming lot or permitted nonconforming use or permitted nonconforming building and structure, I'd understand what that meant. But, so that's an important piece of it. Now, folks, we're just diving into that just a little bit, the concept of grandfather. There's going to be two kinds in this. Current, which is basically taking, when the current sixty-seven and thirty-six came in, sixty-seven came in in two thousand and five. So basically, existing situations before that are allowed to be treated the way they were before then. That's going to continue. We are going to clean up a little bit of that. And then we're going to have the future, which is basically the going into the situation, which will be in two thousand and twenty-five, first half, when it gets all said and done. And that's going to continue as well. We're going to have to basically manage those. Because I think if folks understand that we're going to be committed to grandfathering, and it's going to be an important part of implementing this in transition, I think that there won't be as many concerns about the change that's going to be made because it's going to be, it's going to look like an overall change. And it will be, at least on the back end of it. But there's that front end that won't go away until these cycle through. Everything cycles through, and that's going to be probably after we're all gone. That's it. I just want to basically leave that last one because that is the frame that really exemplifies the work that we're doing. The we is Charles and Kelsey and Ashley, and I'm on the periphery of it. But they're doing a really good job.
A lot of good information. Did you capture your dramatic flair on slide number one hundred and thirty-one?
And it is complex because we're trying to make a change to, especially like land use classification. They then have to have a process of how they can move in and move and start meeting those categories. So I appreciate it very much. We're looking forward to seeing it getting wrapped up.
As we go through.
Next item on the agenda is under new business, the consideration and approval of purchase of modular mobile office. To give some history and explanation. The roof, if anyone has been to our airport, would realize that our existing terminal has been there for many years and has been in a state of decay for quite some time. The first time that we really had a significant issue start to pop up was about three years ago, right at the time that the state and FAA gave us a grant to be able to build the new terminal. So we didn't invest money in trying to fix it at that point in time because we knew that we have one. It was about to be constructed. Now, our fire marshal went out, we actually closed off one of the offices there where most of the damage seemed to have occurred, to try to continue to use that while this transition started happening. During last week's storm, when the flooding happened, the leaks and damage to the structure became significant, more so than what it was before. And Alexis had reached out immediately to try to get everybody involved. With that said, we're still not at a point where construction has begun on the new terminal. There's been a lot that has kind of held that up with the scope of that project, working with the engineers, drilling with the AWAT system, the apron paving, several other things that have kind of delayed that construction from actually starting. So continuing to try to occupy the office that we're currently occupying is no longer a viable option. Reached out to several different places. This is particularly satellite, the first in space is Satellite Shelters Incorporated. Provides mobile modular offices. There are processes where they have different rentals. These are similar to what you see on large construction sites where an office is on-site. This particular one is a two-office structure. It has two offices, a greeting, meeting, waiting area, and an ADA compliant handicap accessible restroom that is also a part of this structure. The total cost delivered and set up is sixty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars. That's to own it. One of the things that I had mentioned to the authority and to Alexis with management at the airport as well is either way, the county would either have to transfer from contingency to try to allow the airport authority to purchase it, which then would make this an item that was owned by the airport, or the county could move forward with trying to purchase this so that when it's finished and it's used, once their new terminal is built, we would then have the opportunity to use that structure for other projects with the county, and it would clear up any confusion that was there. So what I've got before you, and I know you've got a copy of the contract in front of you, it shows the actual cost of the ten-by-fifty mobile office is fifty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. The steps with a handicap ramp that would be added to that for one of the doors, the entry and the other with stairs. The delivery material and then the skirting installation, all of that totals the sixty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars. What we would try to do is if this is approved, go ahead and begin the demolition of the existing building. That way, this can be placed directly in that spot. We're not taking up additional space and tied into the existing electrical internet and septic and water so that we would be able to continue to use that while the construction of the upcoming terminal was built. So that's the reason for the item being added to the agenda so that we can kind of move forward on whether or not we get that on the way or not so that we do have that temporary office space that is available. And with that, I will open up the floor for a motion, and then that way we can get it on the table for discussion.
I'm like emotionally bi- Alexis New Office.
I have a motion in a second to authorize the approval of the Satellite Shelters Incorporated. Total purchase price delivered would be sixty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-four. So do I have any discussion or questions that you guys want?
Take to get up and go in.
As far as having the office delivered. They said they would have it delivered within two weeks. Now, as far as if we're going to try to tear down the other building and put it in the exact same spot, might delay that just a little bit. We've got to work with how we're going to get that building removed. Trying to avoid eye contact with Kirk because Kirk knows if that question is going to go in his direction. Randy has been working with trying to help get the items out and trying to make sure that everything's in place. He's been with Alexis. So if approved, then we're going to move forward. We're trying to come up with what's the best game plan and how can we most efficiently get that out of there. I have a feeling that you can probably take a paper airplane and throw it at the side of the building, and it will come out. So I don't think the actual demolition is going to take a lot of time. It's the haul off and the removal that does become a little bit more. It's a two-week delivery of the new office.
So what's your, how do you operate in the gap between the old building moving and the new building?
I've been moving everything out. And then I have, yeah, I've been moving everything out. And then I've had like my laptop and then the hotspot, and I still have internet right there. So.
Inside the building.
Move down.
I'm moving all the stuff out right now. We're in the process of moving stuff to storage. But I can still get online. I have a laptop from the airport, but in the hotspot.
Just riding around in the mobile office and the vehicle up here. That's why we did upgrade instead of delaying this till the twenty-first. That's why we did try to go.
That's what I was wondering. I didn't want you sitting outside of all their building, your building, trying to work.
Any other questions? With that, I'll in fact, none opposed. That motion carries. We will get that on the way so that we can get this ball rolling. And we'll work with the staff. And then if we do need to have outside assistance as far as that, then we'll get that processed closely and well, to get that taken care of. Do you have two items? One, and I'll go over before we do adjourn. One is that tomorrow night, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting a town hall on the proposed de-spoist on the referendum. That is at six-thirty at the Pickens Junior High School Auditorium. We'll have a panel there. I'd like to encourage everybody to attend if you haven't already made plans to. If you have questions, if you want to learn more. Or if you want to speak up for or against, then that's the perfect opportunity to do that. That is tomorrow night at six-thirty. And then I also have Daniel Reeves, our tax commissioner, is here. And he had an announcement. He wanted to make sure he got up, so Daniel, I'll let you.
As some of you know, you may not know, we, our bills went live on eleven-twenty online. We've had people coming in and paying, and they've been paying online. There's been no issue there. But as far as our physical bill, due to unforeseen circumstances with our vendor, they were delayed for one reason, and then with the storms and everything, they came in and even probably even that much later. So they were over a week late getting the bills mailed. So in order to give everybody sixty days, which the bills already went out, so they would be there in a matter of time anyway. But we wanted to give it from the time that we kind of made the announcement. We've got it in the newspaper coming up. It's on Facebook. We've got it on our website. We're not going to collect any interest until December the seventh. We want to give everybody that full sixty days from the time they get a physical bill before we charge you any interest on that. But like I said, we've been, it's been up online for the last week and a half, something like that. So, you know, people can come in and pay that. But, you know, we still want to give everybody that sixty days to do that. So we just want to let you kind of charge any interest, you know, until that date.
Awesome. Thank you.
Some really engaged citizens. I'm a commissioner, and I didn't even know you posted those online.
I gotta go.